Good afternoon, almost evening. Welcome everyone to our regularly scheduled Orange County Public Schools Board meeting. I wanted to welcome everyone here and I want to welcome back our Vice Chair, Member Gordon, Dr. Gordon. Can't stop using the Dr. Gordon at such a cool accomplishment. Those of you who were with us last week, you remember that Dr. Gordon participated via a call-in. It was a little bit of a challenge, but as I said at that meeting, the level of dedication of the board members is amazing on this board and I want to commend each and every one of you, but especially Dr. Gordon for staying with us through that process. Also wanted to take just a moment, we're going to invite you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but I want to just mention that one of our board members, Member Gallo's not with us right now. She is a little under the weather. So, Member Gordon, I was going to ask if you would lead us in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance and I would invite everyone to keep Member Gordon and anyone else who's under the weather today and to their prayers. Thank you.
(Inaudible)
a longtime partner and supporter of career and workforce development. The foundation provides grants to charitable organizations that focus on educational programs, children and youth services, cultural programs, health or rehabilitative programs, and social services. I don't think there's anybody that lives here in Orlando or central Florida that's not familiar with Dr. Phillips Charities and all that they have done over the years to impact the lives of so many of our children. In 2014, however, Orange County Public Schools was the recipient of a $1 million grant to implement career and technical education options for our students. And I have a feeling there's probably a lot of people who didn't know that, including myself. So, I wanted to take a personal moment of pleasure to thank you. Thank you, Ken Robinson, for your leadership and thank you for recognizing the value of investing in our children. It was a tremendous success and so joining us tonight to explain some of the results and to welcome our guest is our Associate Superintendent of Career and Technical Education, Dr. Michael Armbruster.
I don't know if you were going up.
Oh, thank you.
I was waiting for the up or down.
You know what? Yeah, they've got somebody over there that's doing that, but I'd like to take credit for that, but somebody else is on top of it.
Thank you. Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Jenkins, thank you for this opportunity to recognize an amazing partner for Orange County Public Schools and an incredible supporter of career and technical education. Six years ago, we began conversations around the goal of facilitating a systemic change in five targeted high schools in order to maximize career options on the high school campus and ensure that all students are prepared to achieve their career goals. However, the real overarching vision was to change the perception of career and technical education as a viable choice for all students district-wide. And one of the great benefits of this grant was the impact that it helped to make on schools beyond the five schools in the initial implementation. The $1 million grant accelerated the momentum of program growth and created entirely new student opportunities on high school campuses across the district. So while the initial focus was on five selected schools, the overall impact touched all 20 traditional high schools. For the duration of the grant period, Orange County Public Schools Career and Technical Education saw tremendous growth in many areas, including CTE enrollment in secondary schools going from 28,000 students participating in CT courses across the district when the grant started to 46,991 in 2017 and '18. The district also has experienced huge gains in industry certifications with 4,600 industry certifications earned when the grant started to over 10,000 industry certifications earned in 2017 and '18. Milestones included new programming, new technology, software upgrades across the district, the complete renovation of the Dr. Phillips High School greenhouse, and the addition of a brand-new greenhouse at Edgewater High School through the use of a portion of these grant dollars in partnership with the Four Roots Project. Most recently, the remaining grant dollars helped fund, a personal favorite, the addition of a brand-new medical program at Jones High School in which high school students will now graduate as licensed practical nurses in conjunction with earning their high school diploma. Originally, the support of the Dr. Phillips Charity Grant enabled Orange County Public Schools Career and Technical Education to strategically target five schools, but its real impact, again, was felt across the district with all schools following suit and increasing CTE opportunities for all students. Dr. Phillips Charity's support enriches the community's perception and enhances the credibility of all Orange County Public Schools Career and Technical Education programs. We are truly blessed to have Dr. Phillips Charity's support and I thank you all for taking time to recognize a true community partner. Allow me to now introduce President and CEO Ken Robinson, along with the Director of Grants, and former OCPS CTE team member and a true CTE champion, Wendy Oliver. Thank you.
Absolutely. I was hoping you would take a moment to say a few words. Hate to put you on the spot, but...
Well, thank you so much and thank you for all of your dedication. We're just a small part of it. You know, what we can do with our grant dollars is try and make something just a little bit better. And so in this manner, we were able to think about the students that maybe didn't have a four-year college in mind, but needed that certification so that they could get that job that created a sustainable wage, created benefits for them, and made them productive citizens. And so we're so proud to partner with you all and thank you so much for it.
Ken, thank you so much. And let me, before you come forward, if I could take just a minute, because when you say "just a little bit," a million is a lot more than a little bit. And the change that you make when you help us impact the life of a young person who doesn't see that possibility of going to college, and maybe doesn't see that possibility of having a career as opposed to just having a job, is bigger than perhaps maybe even you recognize. I think all the time about the families that are struggling to make ends meet, the single moms who are trying to figure out how to hold down two jobs and send their kids to school with shoes on their feet and barely enough time to figure out how to help them with their homework or encourage them. Those families are transformed when you have a career and not a job, when you have a certification, when you can become a nurse, when you leave school. Those lives are transformed and when you transform those lives, you're transforming the next generation. So it is a huge impact and it is so important to us that we make sure that every single student knows there's multiple paths to success. College is not the only path, it's just one. And the path to success is made better and richer from the work that Mike does, but from the generosity of you and the foundation and for recognizing the impact of changing a generation, one life at a time. Thank you so much for what you do. And let me recognize also Member Gould and Member Gordon.
Well, I am honored to have been there at the seedling of this idea and I couldn't be prouder of all of the opportunities that it's given, but beyond that, living in the community where Dr. P. Phillips Foundation and Dr. Phillips Charities resides has been truly a blessing for our entire community. What I love about the partnerships that you bring to the community, especially to the school board, is the fact that that legacy of the whole Phillips family, Dr. Phillips, Della, and Howard have lived on. And no matter where our children go, they get exposure to career opportunities, to cultural, to historic, to hands-on experiences like we have at the greenhouse or, you know, in Winter Garden with some of the things that have happened there. It's just truly amazing. And thank you for that investment, thank you for the partnership, and thank you for really planning for multiple generations to be impacted, because these kids will pay it forward too, which is another lesson to be learned by the $170 million that have been invested by Dr. Phillips Charities. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Gordon.
Thank you, Lady. Madam Chair, I wanted to hear from Wendy also. You've got to come up and say something.
Come on, Wendy.
And then I'll say something after you.
Well, I'll turn it back to you and also you, Cat Gordon. I remember working with you and Pam and all of you from the start of this, when I was here working in career and technical education, trying to make a difference in kids' lives. And I remember Dr. Armbruster always saying, you know, the steak and shrimp, so it's Steak and Lobster.
Oh, yeah. Steak and lobster.
Something delicious, you know? So we're really giving people the opportunity to change their lives and it's something that we at Dr. Phillips Charities, our whole board, is so proud to be a part of. So we need the partnerships like you guys and Dr. Jenkins leading the way to just do such a great job to make us want to invest. It makes it worth it for us and the hard work that our organization does to make that money to give away.
And congratulations to you, Dr. Gordon.
Well, thank you so very much. Everybody's been so wonderful about it and I thank you, didn't do it by myself. But I do want to say this, I know Dr. Jenkins is very, very proud because so many of the organizations and just looking at Dr. Michael Armbruster and what he has totally done to revamp those green buttons, it just does something to me every time I see those little green buttons. But when one of Dr. Jenkins staff leaves OCPS, and just spread your wings and go out in the corporate world and bring back something different than what we had before, I mean, Ken Robinson, you know, I mean, you know, and I know Pam, she said, "You're all in our community." Honey, I used to say, "Look, I know you all got it coming to my community." And it wasn't six years ago. It wasn't six. You've always been in our community from day one. And when I say "our community," I'm talking about District Five. When we were down and out, somebody told me, "You can't tell them what to do." I said, "Well, I'm not, I'm just asking." And when I ask, you provide it. But I think you've just done just so much for us with the licensed medical nurse, the medical magnet there, it just, I don't know, my heart is just full. But to see Dr. Jenkins staff go out and work with the Dr. Phillips Charities, work with Universal, work with Walt Disney, our staff leave OCPS and go out, you really don't forget us. You always bring back the best because you know what we're all about and you all really don't know how much we appreciate it. So you, I mean, Dr. Michael Armbruster, you've done an excellent job. We always say, "Do not forget any of the high schools," and to hear you say that CTE has gone from 20,000 to almost 48,000, 50,000, that's over 50 percent. That is just incredible. And then to say that they have touched 20 high schools, you're not just touching there, you're even, knowing Pam, you're already working on the other high schools that we're looking at. And I hear that, but I cannot thank you enough for all of the years that the Dr. Phillips Charity has provided for the children in school board District Five. I have to speak for that, because even though you were given to others, you made sure that we got an abundance of information to move us from those Fs. We had 11 Fs and you came into the school and moved those 11 Fs to 11 As. And several of those superintendents that Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Block had appointed at that time are sitting in the audience. Several of those principals that did that are sitting in the audience and now they're running the school system with Dr. Jenkins. She's promoted them and I know that your work has spoken for you. You know who you are out there. I can call your name, I'm looking right at you, but you've done a remarkable job in working with the charity, so my heart is full.
Thank you for your...
So thank you, Pam, thank you, Mr. Robinson, and thank you Wendy for doing what you're doing.
And Dr. Gordon.
And Dr. Armbruster. Thank you.
Awesome. Hang on, yes, sorry, you're not done yet.
We got one more.
Dr. Castro-Danah.
It's always fun to sit next to Dr. Gordon. All right, I just want to also thank you. I represent the district that has Edgewater High School and we are so excited about the opportunity we have for the agri-science and the urban farming and sustainability from the Four Roots Partnership. And I know that Dr. Shanoff has done such an amazing job pulling everything together to making sure that kids can get credit for the agri-science and he's really incorporated the instruction with the resources and it's just, it couldn't have happened without a partnership and without support. So I truly appreciate it because we really are giving more opportunities to our kids. I know that a lot of kids at Edgewater never thought about agri-science or, you know, that's not like something that they're brought up in here in College Park. So I appreciate your help in expanding their opportunities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I know, so cool. And, I mean, community as in whole county. Exactly, yeah. I just knew you meant that. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any newly appointed administrators to recognize tonight?
Actually have two. Madam Chair, members of the board, let me introduce to you Destiny Hahn, who was instructional coach at West Ridge Middle, will be the new Assistant Principal at West Ridge.
Thank you, School Board Members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff, for the opportunity to serve at West Ridge Middle School. I'd like to thank my husband Kevin, my girlfriends Kim, Alyssa, and Cecile. And lastly, I'd like to thank my principal, Mr. Turner. I know it's going to be a great year at the greatest middle school in America.
Yay! I love it. Thank you.
Okay, Destiny, didn't tell you, husband and girlfriends, you are now volunteers at West Ridge Middle School. Just thought you needed to know that comes with the appointment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cheryl Miller-Beckhor was the Program Assistant for Elementary ELA. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Riverdale Elementary.
Thank you, School Board Members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff, for the opportunity to serve Riverdale Elementary School. I would also like to thank my mentors, Mr. William Bond, Ms. Sandy Salma, Mr. Rob Bixler, Ms. Janet Medina-Mastrey, and Ms. Tiffany Stokes. I would also like to thank Dr. Bradshaw and Mr. Charlton and the East Learning Community for placing their faith in me. And I would like to also thank my family and friends who've supported me through this journey. Thank you so much and it's going to be a great year at Riverdale.
And before I let you all go back to your families, let me recognize Dr. Gordon.
Hey.
Yes, so nice.
Cheryl Miller, bless your heart. You didn't get to go to District Five, but it's okay, you'll be at Riverdale. But I do want to say, I do want to say, Mr. Turner, just stand up with your good-looking self. Now, okay, Mr. Hahn, you stand up too. All right, I want you to look at these good-looking men. They're going to be working in the schools of District Five. Turner's the principal and you know what, Destiny, I'm sorry, but your husband probably will be Assistant Principal too. And I thank the ladies that came with you, this is so nice, we love you. You know how much we love you. You all know I don't bother you, so you're doing a good job. So we're looking for great things out of West Ridge. West Ridge is one of the best schools in the state of Florida. Oh, the world, thank you. Okay, the world, I'll take that back. So I'm looking, I'm very so glad to have you. You've just been a joy. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for that. Thank you, Mr. Turner, and nice seeing you, Mr... Y'all are good-looking men.
Okay, well, for those of you who came just for recognition, you all are welcome to leave or you can stay with us the rest of the evening and see what fascinating things we're going to discuss. Just a little advice, I'd go.
That was nice.
Yeah.
I'm glad you didn't take it.
All right, Dr. Jenkins, we have a strategic plan update. And no, I was only kidding about leaving, I would not leave. I want to hear the strategic plan update. Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you. If you recall, we postponed this presentation. We are now ready to hear the presentation on our progress monitoring, starting with Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff, for the opportunity to present and share information related to the comprehensive assessments and progress monitoring offered through OCPS. Joining me today are Dr. Jennifer Sasser, Associate Superintendent in the Office of Research, Accountability, and Grants; Dr. Chan Ann, Senior Director for the Office of Research, Accountability, and Grants; and Dr. Frank Gilbert, Director of the Test Development and Measurement Department. Dr. Gilbert.
The Test Development and Measurement Department manages the administration of OCPS comprehensive This includes the district and state testing programs providing training and support to school testing coordinators and ensuring that each test is administered following the appropriate procedures and security protocols. The assessments we support take many forms, but all the assessments fall along the continuum of assessment. The continuum goes from the low-stakes classroom measures such as classroom quiz or bellwork activity. These happen frequently, they're low stakes, and the purpose is to get information for the teacher and the student to improve student learning. That is why we say these are assessments for learning. On the other end of the continuum, we find the assessments that have high stakes, such as the state assessments. These don't happen every day and although they are high stakes, they're low frequency. These tests are designed mostly to measure what students have already learned, which is why we say they are measurements of learning. Both assessments for learning and of learning have their place in education. In OCPS, we try to achieve a balance. As a school district in the state of Florida, we operate under state laws, rules, and regulations. There are some state requirements for assessments associated with each one. Assessments support instruction and student learning. According to Section 1008.22 of the Florida statutes, the comprehensive assessment program in Florida is designed to provide instructional personnel with information on student achievement of standards and benchmarks in order to improve instruction, assess the achievement level and annual learning gains of each student in English, Language Arts, and Mathematics, and the achievement level in all other subjects assessed, to provide data for making decisions regarding accountability, recognition, and improvement of operations and management, to identify the educational strengths and needs of students, and the readiness of students to be promoted to the next grade level or to graduate from high school, to assess how well educational goals and standards are met at the school, district, state, and national and international level, and provide information to aid in the evaluation and development of educational programs and policies. Assessment program participation is a requirement listed in the Florida statute, Section 1008.22, which states that participation in assessment program is mandatory for all school districts and all students attending public schools, including adult students seeking a standard high school diploma. The table on the left of this slide is a list of the state assessments we'll be discussing today. The table on the right is a list of state requirements. As we go through the presentation, we will connect the assessments with the requirements they meet. We'll begin with the first state assessment that our students are likely to take. In Florida statute 1002.69 regarding statewide kindergarten screening, kindergarten readiness rates and state-approved kindergarten program involvement, the Florida Department of Education must adopt a statewide kindergarten screening. Therefore, to measure student readiness, the Florida Kindergarten Readiness Screener or Flicers is given to kindergartners during the first 30 days of their school. Flicers is a measure of the academic skills students have when they begin kindergarten. It's an adaptive, computer-based assessment that the kindergartners are able to independently complete with their teacher's supervision. In addition, the state uses this information to evaluate the effectiveness of the state-funded voluntary kindergarten, pre-kindergarten programs that the entering kindergartners have attended. The results of the Flicers are used to fulfill a number of requirements and they include student assessment program participation and student readiness. Like Flicers, the Florida Standards Assessments are required by law. As referenced earlier, participation in the assessment program is mandatory for all school districts and all students attending public schools. The Florida Standards Assessment, or FSA, are the core of the state assessment and the accountability system, and they are grade-level-based assessments. That is, these tests are aligned to the standards for the course descriptions for each grade level. FSA mathematics covers grades three through eight. FSA English Language Arts covers grades three through 10. FSA ELA in grades three and 10 have distinctive requirements. For grade three, Florida statute Section 1008.25 states that if the child's reading deficiency is not remediated by the end of grade three, the child must be retained unless he or she is exempt from mandatory retention for good cause. The Florida Department of Education has operationalized that till Level Two on the FSA ELA. A specified portfolio or a concordance score on our approved test can also be used. For grade 10, the Florida statute Section 1003.4282 includes requirements for standard high school diploma. It states that a student must pass the statewide standardized grade 10 reading assessment or, when implemented, the grade 10 ELA assessment or earn a concordance score in order to earn a standard high school diploma. The results of all the FSA assessments are also used extensively in the calculation of district and school grades and school improvement ratings as specified in Florida statute 1008.33 and elaborated in Rule 6A-1.099811 in the Florida Administrative Code, or FAC, regarding the differentiated accountability state system of school improvement. Schools identified as schools in need of improvement based on the student performance must provide progress monitoring. They're also used as a part of the calculation for the student learning growth portion of the teacher evaluations. As specified in Florida statute Section 1012.32 regarding personnel evaluation procedures and criteria, at least one-third of the performance evaluation must be based upon the data and indicators of student performance. The ELA and math courses... The ELA and math courses are measured by available statewide standardized assessments. Under the previously mentioned Florida statute Section 1008.22, the state offers Florida Standards Alternate Assessment, or FSAA, for students with significant cognitive disabilities. The FSAA is designed for students whose participation in the general statewide assessments, such as FSA, is not appropriate even with accommodations. The results of the FSA and FSAA are used to fulfill a number of requirements. These include the student assessment program participation, grade-three promotion or retention, high school graduation, school grades or school improvement ratings, school improvement plans, and progress monitoring, the teacher evaluation.
To this point, we have been describing state assessments that are grade-level based in ELA and mathematics. Now, we are going to shift to state assessment that are course-specific, called end-of-course exams, or EOCs. Like the other state assessments, participation in these assessments is mandatory under Florida statute Section 1008.22. The state EOCs are a series of exams aligned specifically to the state standards for the following courses: civics, which in our district is traditionally taken by grade-seven students; high school Algebra I; high school geometry; high school biology; and high school U.S. history. Middle school students that take Algebra I receive high school credit for this course. In addition, passing the FSA Algebra I EOC is a graduation requirement, as specified in Florida statute Section 1003.4282. The requirement states that a student must pass the statewide standardized Algebra I EOC assessment, or earn a comparative score, in order to earn a standard high school diploma. Additionally, according to Section 1003.4282 of Florida statutes, a student enrolled in a course with a statewide standardized EOC must take the assessment, and the results must count as thirty percent of the student's course grade. The results of all FSA and NGSSS EOCs are used to fulfill a number of similar requirements, as previously discussed with addition of a few others: student assessment program participation; final grade, uh, final course grades; high school graduation in the case of Algebra I; school grades or school improvement ratings; school improvement plans and progress monitoring; and the student learning growth portion of teacher evaluations. As is true of all the state assessments, participation in the statewide science assessments is mandatory. In addition to the biology EOC, Florida tests science in grades five and eight. The results are used to fulfill a number of requirements, including student assessment program participation, school grades or school improvement ratings, school improvement plans, and progress monitoring, and student learning growth portion of teacher evaluations. The post-secondary education readiness test, or PERT, is a common placement test for determining readiness for college instruction in Florida. The results of this test can still be used as comparative scores to meet high school graduation requirements for Algebra I for students who will be in grades eleven and twelve during the 2019 to 2020 school year. It is also currently accepted as a way to demonstrate readiness to participate in due enrollment courses, as addressed by Florida statute Section 1008.30 and Section 1007.271 regarding due enrollment and post-secondary admission. To offer another opportunity for students to earn a concordance score, the district will also be providing the ACT School Day assessment. Florida statute Section 1003.56 states that each district school board shall identify limited English proficiency, proficient students through assessment. The Florida Department of Education specifies an assessment called access for ELLs, or English Language Learners, to measure the acquisition of the English language by our students for whom English is a second language. ELL students in grades kindergarten through twelve take this assessment once a year. Similar to FSAA, for ELL students who also have significant cognitive disabilities, the state offers access for ELLs alternate assessment. The results are used to fulfill a number of the requirements, including student assessment program participation and English language instruction.
Next, we will discuss the local district assessments. The iReady Diagnostic is an online adaptive assessment of reading and mathematics that is administered to students in grades kindergarten through eight. The iReady Diagnostic results align with the promotion-retention requirements listed in the Florida statute 1008.25, and are used by grades-three students who receive a Level One on the FSA ELA to demonstrate good cause that they have the reading skills to be successful in grade four. Florida provides students with an opportunity to demonstrate acceptable level of performance on an alternate standardized reading or English Language Arts assessment approved by the State Board of Education for promotion. The data from iReady is also used as a part of the school improvement plan and for progress monitoring. Additionally, they are used in the calculations for the student learning growth portion of the teacher evaluations for kindergarten through grade-two teachers. Progress monitoring activities are locally-created activities that are used in courses that have state assessments but are not measured using iReady. They include science grades five and eight, civics, Algebra I, geometry; English Language Arts grades nine and ten, high school biology, and high school U.S. history. The results are used as a part of the school improvement plan and progress monitoring during the school year. Under the leadership and support of Test Development and Measurement Department, and in collaboration with the Curriculum and Digital Learning Department, teachers and instructional leaders from the district create these measures in a way that they are tightly aligned to the state standards and to the OCPS Curriculum Resource Materials, or CRMs. The progress monitoring activities were revised this summer by teams of teachers and leaders at the First Methodist Church downtown. The PMAs are administered near the end of each grading period. They are designed to identify students' misconception or error of thought that lead them to choose the wrong answer. Each answer choice is designed around a common mistake that students make. Based on the answer to each question, the teacher receives a next-step report that connects misconceptions with the resources in the OCPS Curriculum Resource Materials, such as which standard it's connected to, and when the concept was first introduced, and when would be a good time to reteach it. It focuses on instruction of what students need to know, rather than having to cover the entire topic again. The Common Final Exam, or CFEs, are district-created assessments that are written by OCPS teachers and instructional leaders. The Test Development Measurement Department, in collaboration with the Curriculum and Digital Learning Department, facilitate the process of creating high-quality assessments aligned to state standards for each of the six hundred and seventy-six courses not already covered by other standardized assessments, such as FSA, AP, or IB. The nearly eighty thousand students in grades kindergarten through grade four do not receive common final exams, as the FSA ELA mathematics is used to calculate the student learning growth for the elementary teachers. The specials in elementary, such as art, music, and physical, physical education and health, do have CFEs, but only in grade five as the culmination of the elementary experience. Every summer, the results of each CFE are analyzed and the assessments are revised. Our team has been invited to present at national and international assessment conferences on the process we use to create the OCPS and revise those assessments. OCPS Common Final Exams level the playing field for teachers and students for providing a shared expectation of what a student who completes a class should know and be able to do. The results of these exams are included in the final grade calculation, and also used as a part of the student learning growth portion of the teacher evaluation.
Let us move on to national and international assessments. The PSAT-NMSAQT, or National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, is a test used for grade-eleven students to qualify for National Merit Scholarship, or to earn a comparative score for FSA Algebra I EOC. It is also offered to all grade-ten students to provide feedback to students and teachers in preparation for college entrance exams. The SAT and ACT are college entrance exams. The SAT and ACT tests are available to all students to test multiple times a year during the traditional Saturday administration. In addition, OCPS has been offering SAT and ACT exams during the school day for students in grades eleven and twelve. These tests provide concordance scores that can be used to meet the high school graduation requirements for FSA grade-ten ELA and FSA Algebra I EOC. Results of the SAT reading in grade eleven are used in the calculations for the student learning growth portion of teacher evaluations. Advanced Placement, or AP, offers college-level course curricula and examinations to high school students. These courses are very rigorous, and there is an approval process that OCPS teachers must go through to be able to teach AP courses. OCPS also make available two internationally-recognized high school curricula: the International Baccalaureate, or IB program, and the Cambridge Advanced International Certificate of Education, or ACE program. All public community colleges and universities in Florida are required to award a minimum recommended credit for AP, IB, and ACE program exams. Results of these exams are used to meet requirements included in the college and career acceleration component of school grades, and in the calculation for the student learning growth portion of teacher evaluations. There are assessments that are required by the state, but are not part of the accountability system, and do not have a direct impact on the students or schools who participate. They are also not taken by all students, and the district does not receive scores at the student, school, or district level. The results are reported at the state or national level. You have likely seen news stories ranking states within the U.S. or countries across the world. These are the tests that are used to make those comparisons. Florida statute Section 1008.22 also requires districts to participate in the administration of the National Assessment of Educational Progress, NAP, or similar national or international assessments. In OCPS, we administer the following assessments: National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAP, which is administered to a sample student in grade levels four, eight, and twelve, on subjects including civics, economics, geography, mathematics, music and visual arts, reading, science, technology and engineering literacy, U.S. history, and writing; trends in international mathematics and science study, TIMS, which tests a sample student in fourth and eighth grade in mathematics and science; the progress in international reading-literacy study, PROS, which is a carefully-constructed reading assessment to collect information about fourth-grade students' literacy performance; and, the last one, the Program for International Student Assessment, or PISA. This test is provided every three years, and assesses fifteen-year-old students in reading, mathematics, and science literacy from all over the world. And now, Dr. Schuler, the Chief Academic Officer, will be sharing information regarding progress monitoring in OCPS.
Thank you, Dr. Ann. Principal supervisors, area superintendents, and district administrators utilize the continuous improvement model to monitor and support schools. During the planned stage of the continuous improvement cycle, schools and principal supervisors examine data, review research and best practices, and provide opportunities for teachers and community members to create theories of action, design strategies, and plan for the implementation of the school improvement plan. The do phase of the cycle is where schools implement the strategies planned within their SIP. The check phase refers to opportunities for schools and principal supervisors to assess and monitor progress made towards the achievement of targets and strategies outlined in their SIP. The act cycle allows schools and principal supervisors to review and refresh their SIP, and take action based on the assessment of observable and measurable progress towards identified goals and objectives. In order to provide support and monitor progress district-wide, schools are divided into tiers. Schools within Tier One and Two are located in learning communities and Orange Technical College. These areas are supervised by area superintendents, associate superintendents, a chief of high schools, executive area directors, under the direction and guidance of the deputy superintendent. These supervisors facilitate the work of examining the relationship between student and observational data to guide the school's action steps for continual improvement toward identified goals that are focused on teaching the standards, social-emotional learning, small-group instruction, common assessment development, common planning of rigorous lessons, modeling of effective instruction, and delivering job-embedded professional development. Multiple departments, such as the Minority Achievement Office, Curriculum and Instruction, and the Exceptional Student Education Department, to name just a few, take an active and supportive role in providing various differentiated professional development opportunities and resources for all schools. Support is provided in the areas of content and pedagogy for coaches, teachers, and administrators to ensure all students have equitable access to rigorous curriculum. Tier Two. Schools in need of additional support are categorized in Tier Two. Principal supervisors and Tier Two schools work collaboratively with corrective programs to monitor schools and provide more intensive and targeted coaching support on content, interventions, planning, data analysis, instructional delivery, and the implementation of a multi-tiered system of supports, also known as the MTSS process. Teams of individuals routinely conduct school and classroom walkthroughs to help plan and coordinate school support for schools in Tier Two. In addition, the Florida Department of Education provides monitoring and support to some schools in Tier Two. Tier Three schools are in the School Transformation Office. The School Transformation Office provides comprehensive supervision, feedback, and support. School-based principals, executive area directors, senior administrators, and coaches report directly to the associate superintendent, who is supervised by the deputy superintendent. Goals are accomplished through initiatives that focus on teacher quality, leadership capacity, parental involvement, and community partnerships. The School Transformation Office works with other district departments and school leadership teams to utilize data to inform decisions and provide customized assistance and training grounded in real-world experience and evidence-based practice. In addition, they help schools form partnerships with families, neighboring schools, and the community. To assist schools in demonstrating growth, the School Transformation Office confers with the Florida Department of Education to monitor and to, and to support the school improvement plan, conduct instructional rounds with principals, and create a network of best practices. This office is fluid and not a permanent This office is fluid and not a permanent place of residence for schools. Now, as we look at our overall district results for 2018-19, the graduation rate and math learning gains components increased by four percentage points. Our college and career acceleration category increased by eight percentage points, which illustrates the increased opportunities OCPS has provided for students to be successful in accelerated coursework and industry certifications. Overall, these increases contributed to a 27 total point gain in the district grade calculation, and the district grade increased by three percentage points, from 59% to 62% of total possible points. This year, we will continue to work on improving the English Language Arts Achievement, integrated with social-emotional learning. Thank you for the opportunity to share information regarding assessments and progress monitoring. We will now ask Dr. Jenkins to provide you with additional comments. Thank you.
Members of the board, this extensive report certainly is for your review. Happy to answer any questions. I know staff have met with individual board members as well, so happy to answer any questions here at your discussion. I would like to publicly commend all of our schools and all of our teachers who contributed to that school grade of A and to our central office instructional support staff and every OCPS team member whose job it is to support teaching and learning in our classrooms. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let me recognize first Dr. Kester-Dennel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that presentation. I have some questions. I know that there's been a lot of discussion by parents about the need to reduce the amount of testing that we do, and that was a lot of testing. I know a lot of it is mandated by the state, and then there are federal tests that we participate in, but I'm concerned about the local or the district tests that we do. And I understand that the reason for the tests is because they accomplish certain requirements. And so I'm looking at the local assessments, I Ready and progress monitoring. So my questions are really about I Ready. I just want to understand how extensive the use of I Ready is. So I know when you talk about the I Ready as an assessment, there are three diagnostic assessments in English and three in math, and can you tell me, is that given to all K through 8? What grade levels do we do the diagnostic assessments on?
Yes, we provide the I Ready diagnostics, as you said, three times per year in grades K through 8. That is correct.
All right, thank you. About how long does it take for maybe a 3rd grader or 4th grader to complete one session of a diagnostic test? Is it like an hour?
And that varies, you know, and it depends on the students. So it varies, that timeframe. Each individual student is different in terms of the amount of time it will take a child to complete that diagnostic assessment.
Okay.
So it varies.
Could it take up to a couple hours for some kids, breaking it up, or is that?
You know, I have seen that it has taken approximately an hour, and teachers typically will break that time up if they see that the assessment or that diagnostic is taking an extensive amount of time for a student.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Do teachers take time out from the classroom and instruction to train on how to use I Ready?
Are you referring to training the students?
No, not necessarily.
You're saying do teachers take?
On the teachers. Do the teachers themselves go with a consultant or something to spend time to learn how to do that?
Teachers, it is my understanding that teachers have been trained initially, and I'll let Dr. Gilbert answer that question in regards to the training that was provided to teachers on I Ready.
They receive initial training on how to administer the assessment, and then, as you know, the I Ready program also has an instructional part, and they receive training on how to access and use the results of the diagnostic to support instruction in the classroom, specific to what it is the student needs to know based on the assessment that identifies on a skill-by-skill basis what it is they need.
Okay, thank you. I have a question. It was stated that the I Ready is also used for teacher evaluations. Can you explain how is that used?
So, we use I Ready Administration, the first one, and the third Administration of I Ready Diagnostics to calculate the student learning growth scores for each teacher in the grade, in grades kindergarten through 2.
Okay, so, K through 2. I Ready, just K through 2 for the dot, for?
Student learning growth calculation of teacher evaluation.
For teacher evaluations. Okay. Can you explain to me, or just kind of, I haven't seen how I Ready looks in kindergarten? Can you give me an idea of what that might look like for a kindergartner?
So, kindergarten students are allowed to use headsets so that the information is read to them in order for them to respond. So there's an auditory component to the assessment in kindergarten.
Okay, so teacher evaluations are based on the initial diagnostic for kindergarten and compares it to the last diagnostic and that growth?
Yes, to calculate the growth, we use, we look at the difference between the third one and the first one, and also we take into account different student and teacher and school characteristics. So it's a pretty complex statistical models to calculate teachers' unique contribution to student achievement within a certain period of time.
Okay, do the kindergartners get help on this? Do they, are they just on their own?
For the most part, the kindergartners are on their own when they take this assessment, but again, I Ready provides assistance through an auditory component that kids are able to listen and respond accordingly.
Okay, I just am concerned that teachers are being evaluated based on this program we're using with kindergartners, so. And it was also stated that I Ready is also used to guide the school improvement plans? Is that true?
So, the data.
Or how is that?
That is one data component that is used to guide school improvement plans. Our schools, our administrators, our teachers and staff utilize a multiple source of data points in order to guide their instruction and guide the progress of our students.
Okay, so it's not just?
No, it's not just I Ready. They use multiple data points. That is one indicator.
Okay, and then I have a question about how I Ready is used in the portfolio for 3rd graders. Since we don't always get the FSA scores for reading early enough to know, do we give that 3rd grade diagnostic or portfolio option to all 3rd graders just in case?
The 3rd diagnostic, which is the one that would be used for good cause, is timed for the benefit of the individual students. Some, we have great confidence are going to do fine, others we try to wait until after they've completed summer school and take a diagnostic then. So, because there's rules by the state of how long the assessment has to be given after the state assessment, and it can't be given more than twice, and there must be 30 days between, so there's all these calendar restrictions that we do. And that's the good cause, if you will, assessment. And then the portfolio assessment is a separate assessment that is actually housed in Performance Matters. That is designed by the state to indicate that students have the skills necessary to be successful in 4th grade.
Okay, so I appreciate all your information answering my questions. I just, I can't help but draw a conclusion that we put a lot of eggs in one basket, or is it one big old egg in one basket? Seems like we rely so much on I Ready for so much information about our kids, and I'm not sure that it is always valid. And I know you can probably give me some statistics that say, no, it's valid, but it's, we're also looking at information that the company provides telling us how valid they are, and I'm not sure that that is always the best source to determine if it's the, an appropriate use. So I just want to caution the over-reliance of this data for I Ready. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any comments back on that?
The study that she's referring to was performed by a third-party, highly-respected research company that did the evaluation, and we look ongoing, and Dr. Ahn's evaluations as a part of the value-added vital calculations, the student learning growth calculations, indicate how well the test is performing. And so, within the limitations of testing younger children, as you know, is harder than testing older children because the attention spans, for example. It's harder, but they do a good job, and it works out pretty well.
So, we have a number of board members who want to be recognized. Just so I know, is it on the same subject?
Yes.
Okay, because I had a follow-up question or two, so if we're on this subject, let's take everybody that wants to talk.
Might be able to help some of the angst.
Okay, so I'll hear from Member Lopez, and then I'll go to you, and then anybody who wants to talk, I just, Member Lopez, and then we'll go to Dr. Jenkins. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the team. You're doing an amazing job. It's a very long presentation, and very difficult to understand because there are so many tests. I have a question with the I Ready, a clarification. I know that the I Ready can help students, well, the majority ELL students in 3rd grade, that if they don't pass the FCA, the FSA FCA, I'm still in colonial high school nineties, so if they don't pass the FSA, they can take the I Ready, and if they pass the I Ready, they can go to the next grade. Is that true or not?
Yes, there are multiple assessments that we can look at as an exemption for students in lieu of passing the 3rd grade FSA.
Is there another grade that they can have the same, the same opportunity to not, you know, to be promoted to the other grade or be graduated in high school?
So are you referring to elementary or middle school or high school?
Elementary, middle school, and high school.
Yes, we do have various other assessments that they can utilize in high school, and I'll let Dr. Gilbert talk about those assessments.
3rd grade is the only one that has the mandatory retention by the state, and so it's much less rare, I mean, it's much less common for students to be retained in other grade levels. So it's most common for the 3rd graders, but the same assessment data is available and can be used as a part of that for other grade levels.
So I Ready only helps, you know, the students that are not passing the FSA only in elementary school?
It's used K through 8, only administered K through 8.
But only in 3rd grade are the one who cannot, you know, cannot, can have that opportunity to be promoted to 4th grade.
Yes, and for later grades, for example, for the high school graduation requirement, we have other assessments that we can use to produce the concordant scores.
Those are ACT and SAT?
Yes, those, and pert.
And pert only for two years?
Pert is gradually facing, fading out, but yes, pert.
Pert is only going to be for incoming 9th and your 10th graders. 9th and 10th graders cannot use pert. 11th, 12th graders can still use pert. 9th and 10th graders will have to use FSA.
In the I Ready, does the school have any mandatory ways of using the I Ready, or they have the possibility to use it in a creative way just based on the principals or the school needs, how it works?
So, I Ready is utilized to meet the individual needs of the students, and we have recommended that they utilize I Ready and math and reading 45 minutes weekly. So 45 minutes of math and 45 minutes of reading weekly, and that's just a recommendation. And again, as we mentioned earlier, we have the diagnostic assessments that occur three times per year. All students K through 8 participate in the diagnostic assessments. Grades should not be assigned when you ask how schools should utilize I Ready, and we ask that they do not assign I Ready assignments for homework.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, I'll turn to you next. I had some, just some questions about the issues that Member Kester-Dennel raised, so perhaps I'll just, you'll probably, I'm guessing, answer them, but I have some concerns about, are there anything else that we needed to validate the results? What would be the other options?
Sure, so, so a couple of things I would like to make the board aware of. First, before I Ready, there was NWEA. You will have to have some means of progress monitoring. If it's not I Ready, then it would be some other means. Second, I think I'm hesitant to make significant changes since we just regained our A status, that we not prematurely dismantle what is in place. Nonetheless, we've been talking about earned autonomy, and this is where I think there might be some relief, and I'm preempting Dr. Vasquez's information that will be going out to schools. But for those schools that are A and B schools, they will have some flexibility around even the diagnostics. So, based on our research and our own evaluation, the diagnostic administration and instructional component, based on state requirements, school grade performance and school improvement support categories will be based on the ESSA categories. So remember, we talked about earned autonomy. It's not just that your school is high-performing, but when we look at your subgroups, are they all being served, your ESSA requirements, if you will. So schools that earn a letter grade of A or B will now have the ability to make instructional decisions in that intervention program, in what intervention programs that they use. They have earned, they will have earned autonomy to select those intervention materials. Remember specifically those A and B schools that have met ESSA requirements for their subgroups. If you've got large gaps in serving your subgroups, then we need to have some consistency. The changes to the I Ready instructional component will have an impact on approximately 90 elementary, middle, and K-8 schools. We will reduce the number of required diagnostic assessments to free up some of their time because of their performance. If you don't have the performance, if you have significant gaps, then we need to have at least that first and third diagnostic in place so that we can inform instruction and hopefully make students, have students reach success. Schools that have earned a letter grade of C, D, or F will also see a reduction in the number of diagnostics administered. However, they will be required to continue the use of the instructional component for those students who are struggling. Information will be going out from the district office to schools with those adjustments, and our decisions are based on a review of the data, and we are confident that that much earned autonomy can be put in place for this school year. Hope that answers several of your questions. If you have more, Madam Chair, we're certainly willing to answer those as well.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let's go then to Member Bird.
Thank you for that, Dr. Jenkins. That is good to hear, definitely. Some of my questions were answered, but I just want to clear up a few things with the I Ready for progress monitoring. You said that there's, was I, or did I mishear this? There's three tests for math and three tests for reading, given? There's three tests for math and three tests for reading given three times a year?
No, there is one test for reading and one test for math. But they're given three times a year. So you have a beginning, you have a middle and end assessment. Or diagnostic, yes?
That's what I thought. Okay. And, well, I think you just covered that with what you said, Dr. Jenkins. It seems like, first, I want to tell you that the presentation was really good. I really appreciated the way you highlighted the requirement, what requirements were filled for each assessment. That was really helpful, so thank you for doing that. The three areas that were highlighted for the I Ready progress monitoring, which were third-grade retention, teacher evaluation and progress monitoring, all those areas were also monitored for the state tests. So, you know, my question is, although I think I kind of already know this answer, but my question is, why do we, why do we have to double up? You know what I mean? If we're already getting answers we need from other assessments, why do we have to double up? That's my question, I think.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So the purpose of the I Ready at the K-2 is there are no other assessments at those grade levels.
Okay.
And the progress monitoring goes on throughout the year so that you can monitor whether or not students are making the progress before they get to the final state assessment. So you would see overlap on grades three through eight because the stakes on the state assessment are high for the student and for the district and for the school. And so what we use the I Ready for throughout the year is to make sure that the progress is occurring and not waiting until the end of the year. And then we have the sudden surprise. The year that Dr. Gordon referred to, and we had the 11 apps, was the big surprise because we didn't have progress monitoring in place. And that's what the purpose of the progress monitoring on top of the state assessment is about.
Okay, that's what I thought. My, all my questions, I think, are pretty much answered. And I still struggle, like, like my neighbor right here said, that I struggle with all of these testings, especially my, our grade five. I'm really concerned about our, our poor grade five. They have, you know, I mean, they've got the science, they've got the, I mean, they've just got, they've got so many tests that year that, you know, it's already a hard age. And I feel like it's just, we've got, we're putting so much pressure on them and all those final, the course final exams, you know, then they have to take all the specials tests that no one else has to take on top of everything else that they have to do. I really wish there was a way, somehow, we could look at fifth grade and see if we could ease up something on those guys because I'm just, I'm really concerned for them. And then my last question is just the national tests, all those national ones that we participate in. How, what are our, what's our why for that? Do we do it just because it's, I mean, what is the reasoning behind it?
It's required by the state law that we participate in, for example, the NAEP. And the reason is to give a comparison of the state curriculum and the state's student performance compared to other states. And when, you've no doubt seen those articles that compare states. And that's one. And it involves a very small number of schools. It may be 12 schools or 10 schools or, in some case, three schools that would participate. And those are randomly selected. And that's where that was.
And I also want to mention that a lot of important educational policy at the federal level actually stem from those international and national comparison studies.
Okay.
That is also the benefit of participating.
All right, good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Bird. Member Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think I'm a little different up here. I'm just so excited. This is just one of the finest reports and a great breakdown of the state assessments, the local assessments and the national assessments. If you want to run with the big dogs, you got to do big things. And I do want to say on the district grade percentages by the components, that is outstanding, just not to fall down. I think we went down just in one of the area, there was a change and it was just a minus, I think a minus one. You have it up there. I, being the one that, I mean, since I've just sat here through the ups and downs and the roller coaster, it's just good to be an A. I mean, you all know how that feels. I was just telling Dr. Jenkins, I said, now, Dr. Jenkins, I know you did it as a deputy superintendent. I said, but my God, I said, it's just good to have an A. It's been a long time since we've had one. And, and, and let me tell you how hard it was to get. And the reason why I'm saying it, because you have to bring us the reports and then we're out there and we're feeling it, we just, well, some of us are giving it too. You know, I have to laugh when they, when they look at these because when, if you're administering these and I have to do some of it, they won't let me do anymore. I asked to just, let me keep the students that are late coming in and then we'll get them the next day. But it's a lot to the testing. It's a lot that our students really have to go through. We never know what Tallahassee is going to do. And that's going to be my final question to Dr. Jenkins. Because I do want to commend you all so much. Dr. Ann, Dr. Shula, Dr. Sasser, Dr. Gilbert, you all have done an outstanding jobs in working with all of the departments to make sure that we are covered. It is not easy, and I know that I Ready is not one of the easiest thing to work with if you're not doing it right. And I think what might have made a difference for us, because we had to have something for local assessment, is that we found out how to do it right. Doing it the right way, and I think someone even wrote a dissertation on it to show us what we were doing right and doing wrong and being able to go back and examine it and see what it is that we could do to make it better. I Ready cannot run by itself. I've said it over and over again. The child cannot sit at the machine by themselves. It has to be somebody there directing them. Now, I hate to tell you all this, but I must say, because we're an, we're a very, very large district. And I just shared with Member Castro Dental, I just told her, I said, we're not going to have to do it this year in Osceola. And there are a lot of reasons why, and I'm sure Dr. Jenkins, you know, she'll find out, you know, some of the reasons, that if you're not monitoring it and you're not doing it right, you're not going to see the increase. Because you could take the AR and just get just as much increase. But if you really do that program right and you make that commitment to it, you're spending that kind of money on it, you're going to have to try to do it right. And it's important that those that work with it do it right and you're going to see some kind of results. Because that is our local assessments and that's what we chose. So that's what we have. Now, the main thing that I'm concerned about, when you look at our scores, Dr. Jenkins, I'm just figuring, you're, you're up there in Tallahassee and you're, you're with the superintendents and the DOE and your staff is back and forth with the DOE. But I'm concerned about the changes that's going to come out of Tallahassee. I mean, nothing has been the same. I think this is the most, I've seen it, about the same when you look at our changes. Because every year that, it was always something that just threw us off. We didn't know what they were going to change or what they were going to do. So my question to you, that you could, you know, find out from the staff, if they know that they could tell this board, what changes do you feel might come out of Tallahassee as it relates to grading? Because we sat up here one time and we were doing everything that we could possibly do and then they changed the formula. They changed the, the whole case. They even changed the test. That's how we end up with FSA. And then, you know, because we argued so much with the FCA, but then we had the California Achievement Test. Everybody remember that? That's what I came in here with. How many of you all remember that out there? Our kids had to do that comprehensive test of basic skills, CTPS. I thought that was about the best. Our students did pretty well on that. But then we weren't, we weren't satisfied with that or they got rid of that. So, Dr. Jenkins, I do need to hear from you to let us know, where do you think the state is going from this point? This, I don't think they're going to just remain dominant like this. I mean, are they going to interfere with our As again, the Bs again, the Cs? We never know what they are coming up with. So what do you foresee and your staff, what are they hearing that would help this board to maybe give you resources that you might need, that we may need to talk about that might help us to guard off what may come? I just, it's hard to trust the Florida Department of Education every now and then. When it, oh, no, I'm not afraid to say it. I've said it and lobbied them. Because we never know what they're going to come up with. We're never on a level playing field. Do you feel that this is a level playing field as you look at the scores from 2018 and look at them in 2019? I just think we floating right now, okay? I don't know what they're going to do, but I don't think it's going to just be, I just can't believe it, that it's just going to sit there like that. I don't think we're going to stay the course.
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dr. Gordon, I think you raise an important point. First of all, there are legislative, there is legislative language where there are triggers in place. Once there is a saturation of A grades, that the bar will raise again. That is by design, that the bar should raise. And so we know we have to expect that. Secondly, the state is in, and we have a conference call tomorrow, perhaps we'll get some information on this, but the state is going through revision for our standards, which we certainly believe if you change the standards, I believe the wording was that we wanted to have the best standards in the country.
Yes.
So if you change the standards, then you will, in my opinion, need to look at your assessment to see if it remains aligned with your new standards. And so change in standards means a change in assessment and quite possibly an adjustment to the accountability system, which wouldn't be necessarily a bad thing. But at this point, Dr. Gordon, members of the board, it's hard to predict, other than we know that once there's saturation of As, the bar will rise. It is to be raised again. And we believe there has to be some adjustment or at least some consideration. Perhaps they'll even consider suspending for a year if they don't come up with new standards until spring, I believe, January, February timeframe. Then what do you do when you change the standards about your actual testing? So you raise valid questions, Dr. Gordon. I have to tell you, I don't have the best answers.
But I know you're at the table. Yeah, you're at the table. You see the smile? Okay, and the reason why I said that, because I know that we all have heard about what our new governor is planning. And he's trying to get standards for Florida. And if he's trying to get standards for Florida, that means some of these standards that our students are used to from kindergarten, middle school, elementary, high school, they will not be the same. And then, as you stated, one thing that we're going to have to pay attention to, even in our legislative forum, to make sure when we lobbying, that when they do do these standards, that they are aligned to whatever instrument. Because we don't, we have no idea what they are going to use as an instrument to measure our students. So this is very important. And he has stated very boldly that this is what his goal is going to do, to come up with a national forum for Florida as it comes to alignment, assessment and standard. So you have another point, Dr. Jenkins?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So, so one other point I wanted to make, I think it's important to note, and we'll resurface this chart. So the number of tests in Orange County has decreased significantly. And it's important to remind folks that we've cut down on the number of tests significantly. You hear of districts that have even fewer tests. It is a question of, of an understanding or a compromise reached in some instances where all of your teachers in an elementary school, for example, just agree, or it is agreed, that all of those teachers will simply take the reading score as part of their evaluation. So art, music and PE, you wouldn't need an end of course exam because instead, art, music and PE just take either the reading or the math scores. That has been done in some districts. Years past, that was not, that was not agreeable because the, the board, as well as teachers that were concerned about it, said I'd rather be scored and graded and my raises based on the curriculum that I teach rather than the reading scores. And so if you could imagine a school that might be struggling with their reading scores, but a dynamite music teacher, she wants her music scores. Or a PE teacher that's doing a bang-up job on his curriculum, he wants his PE score. So there's never a way to satisfy everyone. But when you hear of districts that have cut their numbers of tests even lower, that is when you have everyone in this, in high schools as well. If I'm the journalism teacher or if I'm a special area teacher and you ask me if I want to take the 10th grade ELA scores for my evaluation, and I think I do a fine job with my particular curriculum, it's tough for me to take the ELA scores unless I'm in a very high-performing school. Then I don't mind taking it because it doesn't matter what kind of job I do. And so it's a, it's a tough struggle to make sure everybody is happy. I don't know that there's one solution for every school, but we can certainly have those conversations again around everyone taking a single score, the reading, the ELA. If you consider high school, ninth through 12th grade and everyone taking that 10th grade ELA as their score for their evaluation, it's, it's kind of tough.
It is.
So we can certainly have that conversation again. I just want you to know, that's how some districts have further shrunk the number of tests by lumping everyone in to get those 10th grade ELA or other scores. That's not been our direction in the path. In the past, we can certainly have that conversation again. A better solution is not to try to tie student performance to teacher raises. But that's a, that's a novel idea and it's just not, it's not gone very far. So I wanted to make that clarification as well.
Well, thank you so very much for those points. And I too, again, would like to thank your staff. And as I said, Dr. Shula and her wonderful staff, with Dr. Sasser, Dr. Ann and Dr. Gilbert, great job. I really appreciate you all sitting with us because the more you talk to us, the more we learn. So, Dr. Jenkins, I know you have your handful with watching what they do in Tallahassee because it's going to determine if we could maintain that A. And I, and I guarantee you, there will be some changes. And I think they're going to want those changes by January, February, some kind of way. They may not be able to get all of it, it may not be able to get everything, but I know that there are going to be some changes. But the biggest thing is alignment. And whatever they do, we just hope it aligns to, which I doubt it because of the literature and materials and everything that we're using. But I do hope that we can keep up because right at this moment, you and your staff have made us a high academic achieving district and we're on our way back to the top again. So thank you so very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Member Gould.
So we've been talking about this for about an hour and a half with the presentation, which is an indicator that there is something wrong with the amount of assessments we do in this state anyway. But more, more to the point, as, as we do move forward with changing the assessments, one of the things that I, I have appreciated about our new governor is that he seems to be career-focused instead of kind of testing for testing's sake. So I hope that gets woven in. But I had a fairly lengthy discussion with the briefing team when we were together, trying to figure out if there might be a way, instead of doing assessments in the traditional way, that they could be woven in to curriculum presentation and regular assignments slash testing slash quizzing that we do in order to validate the discussion that's going on in the classroom. If those things could continue to be woven in, especially on the assessments we have control of. Because part of our challenge in this environment, and no matter what we test, even if we're testing, if they're the best, you know, at sitting and looking eye to eye, the day that you say that's going to happen on April 17th, everybody goes into a panic. But if it is fluid in our work and there's still a way to abstract those measurements, and I got to believe with all the technology we have, there is a way to do that. Because we need to know, we don't want to get surprised at the end and find out that we left a chance. we left a child behind, because we didn't identify something that we could have intervened with. That's never what we want. But this, you know, this constant year after year, there's the finish line, and the finish line is not the last day of school. The finish line is the test, is ridiculous. So, and I know you all know all of that, and Dr. Jenkins is in the right place in that communication and think tank, but how else can we make lemonade out of lemons? So that's it. I don't have a question, just a comment, and some, I hope, thought-provoking ideas.
Thank you, Member Gould. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify that I agree with all my colleagues. I do not believe in so many testing. I believe that we have a lot, even where we have less than maybe other counties. But I think that there is a lot of testing. And, you know, sometimes the tests put us out of the content of the class, and focus the teacher, or make the teachers focus on the content of the test, instead of the content of the class. And sometimes, this is, this is going to affect our students when they perform after high school. So it's sad that we have students with anxiety, teachers with anxiety, parents with anxiety, just because of the testing. As a teacher, I remember having to reteach the class maybe five times in a week, because I don't have enough students, because they were testing. But I think that this is something that is happening, maybe because the state is asking us to have local assessment, and that is my question. So my question is, how many local assessments do we need based on the state policies or requirements by the Florida Department of Education?
Dr. Jenkins, do you want to answer that?
So that sort of goes back to my last comment. You could, you could say, "I'm going to have everybody just take the reading score and not have the additional local assessments." That's a conversation we can certainly restart, even with our union. That was not the, the direction we had previously. But if, if I would cut out several tests at the high school level, if everyone takes the, the only state test, I suppose they would take, come to the podium for me, just to clarify, for the state test, they would take, Jennifer has to preserve her vocal cords, so whatever she's telling you, somebody else needs to come to the microphone. So essentially, I believe if, that is a way to cut your local testing, but it means people taking scores that they're really not responsible for. But you can certainly do that systematically, both at the elementary and the secondary level.
So it will be grade nine and 10 ELA, and any EOC courses that high school students take, because they need to take the Algebra I and Geometry for those, but just if students take the Algebra I and EOC in middle school, they don't count.
So essentially, you'd have to divvy out and say, "Everybody who's sort of in the language arts area, you take this score for your outcome, for your student outcome portion of your teacher evaluation. If you're on the math side of the house, you guys take the algebra score, and we'll make that your student growth outcome." You can divvy out, based on state testing, the disadvantage is for a, a teacher, a high-performing teacher in their particular subject matter, instead getting, if I'm a great calculus teacher, well, calculus, you'd probably have an AP exam to use, but if I'm a great math teacher in another area that's not tested by the state, but I am dependent on my four colleagues who teach Algebra I for my portion, for that portion of my evaluation, it just doesn't seem fair. But you can certainly decrease the number of local assessments in that matter. I have to repeat again, a better solution is to stop trying to tie teacher pay to test outcomes. That's the solution I'm looking for. But that, that may not be coming anytime in the near future.
I just have a comment, is related to board member goal, with the word "test" and "assessment," I agree with you 100%. I remember as a teacher, never used the word "test" in my class. So the students say, "All assignments, assignment." Miss, is that a test? No, it's an assignment. So if I use the word "test," again, after they're having so many tests at the same time, they're going to feel, you know, frustrated sometimes, and, or with anxiety. So assignments is all we have here, so we don't have tests, obviously. You know, is a way to assess them in so many ways that they feel more comfortable. The assessment should be a tool for, for learning, and also to higher our students' self-esteem, not to make them feel uncomfortable. Thank you.
I think that was a good note to close on. I, I do think that it is important for us to find balance. Feeling like a dinosaur up here, and having children that went through Orange County Public Schools when we had no consistency in curriculum, and very little testing, and you really didn't know where your child was, and frequently, you know, you would hit a point where you suddenly realized, "Ooh, we have a major problem here," but there was, there was no opportunity along the way for the assessments. And I think that your point about an assessment and putting it in the right context, that it is a way to measure how a student's doing, so that we can help that student stay on track, not judge that student, you know? And I think that the word "test," you're absolutely right, remember Gould is right, gives a very different stress level and a very different connotation, and it doesn't clearly reflect what we're trying to do with the assessments. I, I wanted to commend the presentation. You all have sat with each one of us and given us this same presentation, and now you've had to give it to us again, and it's an enormous amount of material. But without your due diligence, and without you educating us, we wouldn't be at all prepared to make the decisions we are. So your role is invaluable in this process. Dr. Gordon keeps referring to the superintendent keeping her eye on this. We know that she has a lot of eyes on this. We do know who sits at the table, and so at the end of the day, it's Dr. Jenkins who we have to rely on to have the most influence when we're talking about directly with DOE, but it wouldn't happen without the great teamwork. So I wanted to commend each one of you for, and I'm so thrilled that we have people that have all sorts of strengths and passions, because some people would never want to do what you do, but thank goodness you do. And, and there's probably plenty of other things that you wouldn't touch in a million years, so we are really blessed to have people with different strengths, different passions, and I want to recognize and thank you for yours. So with that, we are going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Believe it or not, we're just now starting the agenda. But this was a really good conversation, and something that I know
Thanks, Pam.
... on a lot of board members' minds. So, next on the agenda, I'm going to ask if there are any members of the public, we good? Dr. Shula?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was going to ask if there's any members of the public that wish to address the board during tonight's meeting. Do we have any speaker cards, Mr. and Ms. McGill? No? Okay, then I will skip through remarks regarding limitations on speakers' comments. Let's go straight to public hearing 3.01, Request for Approval of Revised Board Policy EBC, Emergency Preparedness, Emergency Drills, and Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I believe we can take up all of these policies with one vote. Let me give you your dates as they move through the process. All of these, Policy EBC, IA, IHAM, IHBC, JC, and JF came to cabinet on July 22nd. They came, notification went to CTA on July 3rd. The publication date for all of them was June 9th. Rural Development Workshop for all of them was July 7th, and now we are at the school board meeting for final adoption, August 6th.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. So, do, we do not need a presentation? We do not have any public comments? Mr. Rodriguez.
Can you just give me one second to
Yes.
... verify a date to that I was
Okay.
... introduced. So I know for sure you were, you were not here on July 7th, which was a Sunday, so I just want to confirm for the record what the workshop date was, and I apologize.
Okay. We're a very dedicated group. Not that dedicated. Although, if it was on Sunday
We'd be here.
You might be here.
Not on Friday. Not Friday. Sunday, I'll be here.
Sunday, you would be here.
At the church.
Yeah, that's, this is what I thought. So these are the ones that were presented just last Thursday, August 1st, and they were advertised on July 7th. So I apologize, we'll make sure to correct that on the chart for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you can take them all, depending on how the board wants to proceed, but if there's no public comment, you have had discussion, you've had review of some of these, some of these have had work sessions
Oh, you're saying it would be all right for us to vote on all three?
Yes, ma'am.
Any board discussion on this item? Okay. Then is there a motion to approve the revised board policy EBC?
We can take them all at once.
We can take them one at a time. You know, when I'm like, "Let's just take them one at a time, because if there's discussion on the next," so, one at a time. So do I have a motion?
So do.
Motion by Member Colbert is there, second. Second by Member Gould. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all members present, or, I'm sorry, yeah, with all members present voting in affirmative. The next item is 302, Request Approval of Revised Board Policy IA, Student Progression Plan. Again, we have no speaker comments. Last call, any members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing none, any questions, discussion by board members? And if not, the chair will entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Member Kesterdennel. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Colbert. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all members present voting in affirmative. Member Kesterdennel, I was laughing for a minute, because I said I would entertain a motion for approval, and it occurred to me that might have suggested I would not entertain a motion for denial. So that's why I was laughing. Next up, we have item 303, Request for Approval of Re-Adopted Board Policy IHAM, Local School Wellness. Any members of the public, one more time, any members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And any board discussion? Seeing none. Motion by Member Gould, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Lopez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all members present voting in affirmative. We're on item 304, Request for Approval of Revised Board Policy IBHC, Programs for Disadvantaged Students. Any members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any members of the board wish to discuss, or is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Member Byrd, seconded by Vice Chair Gordon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with, I'm sorry, all members present voting in the affirmative. Next, we have item 305, Request for Approval of Revised Board Policy JC, School Attendance Area. Any members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a discussion or a motion? Any member of the board? Motion by Member Kesterdennel, is there a second? Seconded by Member Colbert. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with all members of the board voting in the affirmative. We are now on public hearing 3.06, Request Approval of Revised Board Policy JF, School Admissions Procedure. Any members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Motion by Vice Chair Gordon, seconded by, who, seconded by Member Lopez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all members present voting in the affirmative. I believe that takes care of all of our policies. Member, I'm sorry, Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
All right. No changes to the agenda, no public comments on the agenda, on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No.
Motion by Member Colbert, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Melissa Byrd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all members present voting in the affirmative. We are now on non-consent items. Dr. Jenkins, do you have a report for the board?
I have a brief report. We are ready to start school on Monday. Teachers returned this, two days, yesterday, to the classrooms, and we are so excited about our students coming back on Monday. Now, it does seem that the summer went incredibly fast. For those who did not take a lengthy vacation, it is too late. We, we have, at the, at this point, I want to give you some numbers. 215,000 students is what we are projected for. That is an additional, I'm sorry, 215,700 students. That is an additional 4,000 students we are projected for this year. Forty-two percent Hispanic, 26 percent white, 25 percent black, 5 percent Asian, 2 percent multicultural. 199 schools, including four new schools, three on the west side of town, Castleview Elementary, Waterspring Elementary, and Horizon West Middle School. And then, of course, if you have not seen our new schools, our prototypes, you can certainly see them this week. And then Pershing, our K8 school is opening as well. Replacement schools include Deerwood, we've got beautiful new performing arts centers at Colonial and Boone, and then we've got complete comprehensive renovations at Corner Lake Middle, Lake Jim, Lake George, and Sunrise. All indications are that schools will be ready when our students arrive on Monday. Also wanted to indicate, we'll have press information on Friday, but we also are happy to announce that we have collaborated with all of our law enforcement agencies, so that we have coverage and safety plans in place to go for the first day of school as well. 140,000 laptops will be distributed to our young people, thanks to the generosity of our taxpayers, and that halfpenny sales tax, our digital curriculum continues to flourish. That being said, oh, and let me also mention, Fortify Florida is online. It will be on every student's laptop, so that they can report any concerns. It will be on our website as well. And we also still have our Speak Out Hotline available for anonymous tips, 1-800-423-TIPS. Very excited about the start of a new school year, and I like to remind our entire community that we depend on them, not just for supporting our students and helping to lead them to success, but also for keeping our schools safe. Our greatest assets, our young people and all of our employees, we want to make sure every effort is in place by this entire community to continue to keep our schools safe. That being said, I think that's plenty for tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez.
Madam Chair, members of the board, no further legal report. We do have two executive sessions this evening, so after this, as well as another on collaborative bargaining.
Thank you. And we have no member reports for committees, any other policy issues the board wants to bring to the table for future discussion. All right, seeing none, this meeting is now adjourned, and we will reconvene in about five minutes upstairs for executive sessions.